Just FYI, we do have this as a hybrid. I'm gonna take one more check outside. Jimmy's there, make sure that there's nobody gonna be joining us from a public hearing. I'm still self-isolating and so is Russ.
Oh, okay.
So he's home. Yes, he's home as well. Let me go check that out.
Oh, my goodness. There we go.
I love all that stuff you have above your pantry sign.
Oh, you can see all my tins? Yeah.
Those are great.
Those are, yep. Well, thank you. Yeah. So luckily you can't see in the pantry right now. It needs a good cleaning, bud.
No, can't see a thing. You're safe.
I'm not blinding anybody with the lights reflecting.
No, I had lights on behind me and I turned them off, so.
No, it was funny. I was trying, Zoom sent me the little links to get on, the shortcuts.
Yep.
And didn't work tonight.
Oh.
It was weird. Yeah, so I actually had to log into Zoom to get the meeting started. Yeah, because usually it comes through Outlook.
Oh.
And usually I just click on it, join the meeting and.
Well, I clicked on the link and I didn't, it was sitting there waiting. And so then I did the meeting ID and passcode and then I came in. So is that how you did it too then?
Um, no, I actually had to go in through the browser and open Zoom. Instead of one of the shortcuts. So I went right into my Zoom account and then just started it.
Oh, okay.
So. I don't know. It's.
Temperamental today.
Oh, it's, yes, it is.
Hey, just to let you know, we are at seven o'clock, but I'm waiting for Jimmy to sign on because we do have some, a member of the public joining us.
Oh, great. Okay.
Good evening, Russ.
Good evening, Patrick. How are you?
I'm fantastic.
Hi, Russ.
You are.
Dismissed that, yeah? Just sent me another reminder. Join on this link. No, you're not working link.
First, the order of business. We have the regular meeting from November 1st. Make a motion to approve those minutes.
So I have a question. Oh, so anyway, so I guess it doesn't matter. I mean, we were both in attendance, but you know, not.
That's, Julie and I had a conversation of that, so I'm glad you brought it up just for the public record because we were witnesses to this and we were on those that, yes, we are allowed to move that forward. So it's a good thing that we were.
Okay, all right, excellent. Okay, this for the regular. This is for the regular meeting or?
The first one is for the regular meeting, November 1st.
Okay, so Russ, first it, I second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's been passed. Special meeting, November 9th. And you should make a motion to approve the minutes.
I motion to approve the minutes of November 9th.
Okay.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to tax collector's report. So I'm gonna make a motion to consider and act upon tax refunded refunds as recommended by the tax collector. There are four, for the total of $412.50.
And keep, explain that, what that is?
These are refunds that we're basically writing off at this point.
Oh.
What it is, Kim, is they overpaid and it's very common every month to have one or two or three or four. So they overpaid. So, so the tax collectors are saying we should, we should not make them pay something they don't owe. So I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay.
I second that. It sounds like a good idea.
Okay, perfect. And I will continue that approval process. Okay, so next we are on to any communications from the public.
And so in this, the way it is in zoning, does that have to come before the meeting? Communication from the public or is it?
This, this is, we put this in many years ago for anybody from the public to just tell us what they think. So it's a thing in the agenda where the pub, where the public could, could state whatever complaints they may have or, so it's there for the public to come in. So if there's something later on the agenda, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to come on now if it's on the agenda. If it's somebody from the public, they could come before us with any, anything they want.
Okay, and that doesn't have to be, like in zoning, we have that, but they have to submit something before the meeting so that they can be a part of it, but that's not the way this runs. Is that correct?
No, no, we're more open than zoning.
Okay.
You can come on and say what you want and that's what it is.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so are there any, just to give it one more shot, are there any communications from the public tonight? Nothing being said, we will move on to our board of selectmen, commissions and board appointments. The first is for a conservation commission, vacancy expiring. It's, it's because someone has left the commission, this term would expire on 6/30/2023. And I'm actually gonna make a motion to table this as they are looking for a candidate.
So moved.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. The next, make a motion to appoint Wendy Walker to the Historic District Commission for a four-year term starting on January 1st, 2022, expiring December 31st, 2025.
I approve that motion and I thank Wendy for all her hard work all these years. We love Wendy.
Exactly. I agree.
At least I do.
You're here, all in favor then, I suppose?
Yes.
Yep.
Excellent. So moved. The next appointment will be for Jack Huber, appointed to Historic District Commission for a four-year term, January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2025.
I so moved that appointment.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The next is to, is for the appointment of Museum Board of Trustees. This is a vacancy expiring and will move to expire on November 30th of 2023. My motion is to table this as they are also looking for a candidate.
Okay.
I second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, so moved. The next is for the appointment of zoning Board of Appeals, Nanette Falkenberg, for the four-year term, starting January 1st, 2022 and expiring December 31st, 2025.
I so moved to accept that.
I second. All right, all in favor?
Wait, I didn't give a second.
Oh.
No, she, Kim gave the second. I gave the motion.
I wanna thank.
Oh, you did the motion.
I wanna, I wanna thank Nanette for all her hard work, so I second that.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. The second is for Nancy Schonholz, also to zoning Board of Appeals for your term, starting January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2025.
I'll make a motion to nominate Nancy to another term.
Got it.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. The next is for Suzanne Scott, being appointed to zoning Board of Appeals, alternate four-year term, starting on January 1st, 2022, continuing to December 31st, 2025.
I make a motion to accept that nomination.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? So moved. The next is for the appointment for Geraldine Skin Tiso, to Social Service Director and Veteran Service Contact for a four-year term. This actually starts December 20, or December 1st, 2021 and continues till 11/30/2025.
I'll make a motion to approve, Kim.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next is going to be for the appointment of Jonathan Lord for Tree Warden for a one-year term, starting December 1st, 2021 and continuing to 11/30/2022.
Yep, I make a motion to accept that nomination for Tree Warden.
Right.
Yeah, nothing more better than a tree guy to be tree warden. So yep, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, and then just for, there are two for selectmen appointments. One, as municipal agent for elderly persons from December 1st, 2021 till 11/30/2025, so a four-year term. And I will be moving ahead with that appointment. The next, under the Emergency Services Director, Bernie Meehan, we've spoken and I would like to do a little bit more work in, in that area because we, with only three weeks in, I haven't really dilled into that area. And I would also look for my Board of Selectmen to be part of that decision. So at this point.
I, I think, I think Bernie's a good choice. He's done a good job. There's no reason why we wanna throw a volunteer who's interested out. I know there's some opposition, but I, I'm not for opposition in this town. Neither are we, the sport. Bernie's done a good job, so consider that. I know there's some politics, but I think we should appoint Bernie.
All right.
I really do. I, I don't see a reason not to. And whenever a volunteer does a great job like Bernie has, I know, again, I know there's people in opposition. I get the politics. But, and I've, I've told the people who've voiced concern to me, Bernie's done a good job. I'm never gonna throw a volunteer who wants to volunteer off a position just because you don't like him. That's never gonna happen in, in my court.
Okay.
So I, I hope you'll consider that. I, I thought about this, Patrick, and I'm never gonna say to a volunteer who wants to volunteer, who's done a good job, has done nothing wrong, to not continue. Unless somebody could prove to me there's a reason not to. And I don't see anybody on this meeting from the public who, who's here for that.
Okay, well, Russ, I really do appreciate the feedback. Thank you. That's why I bring these things up for discussion. Kim, did you have any feedback as well?
Um, well, I think that it's important, and I think it's tough in the transition when there, when a, in a position like that comes up and there's only a couple of weeks to really evaluate. That's all. And I think, I think it makes sense to just give it a little more time so you can listen to all sides and understand what's being said, if there is anything being said and to, just to make sure that the stories are all above board. That's all. I think, and I think that's important.
Understood.
Totally agree, Kim. Totally agree.
What I've done is I've made the decision to change the term to a six-month term so that, you know, we can have a proper chance for, for me to catch up to speed. So that's where, where we're gonna sit at that point. That way I can, you know, properly know what that emergency management director position is and, you know, understand it, which is what I'm hoping to do. So, um, let's move on to business. So we, we do need to vote to be part of, as a town, the opioid, Connecticut opioid settlement. It's against three major opioid distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, Amerisoy, Spurgeon, and now Johnson &amp; Johnson. There's been a nationwide settlement with three largest distributors listed above, and now Johnson &amp; Johnson is included. These top distributors have to pay $21 billion over 18 years, Johnson &amp; Johnson, $5 billion over nine years. Out of the $26 billion total, 22 will go to states and towns that join the lawsuit. There's 44 states that are in the lawsuit right now and 40 towns in Connecticut. And, you know, there, I, I would like to move forward with this as a town so we can be part of this and.
I make a motion, this is a no-brainer. I make a motion to move forward.
I, I will say, just to kind of finish it, just so I can get it on the record, the baseline allocation for these funds has already been determined. 15% of it goes to, to towns and cities. 15% of it will go to the state and 70% will go to an advisory commission to make reservation, recommendations on abatement purposes. Right now Connecticut is expected to get $300 million. So just keeping that for the record. So are you still on board?
I'm still on board there, Pat. Kim, you on board?
I am.
Kim, are you on board?
I'm 100% on board.
All right.
Excellent. Okay, then I will continue to move forward.
Well, we need a vote. We need a vote.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, so I make a motion to move ahead with the opioid litigation.
I made the, I made the motion. Somebody needs to second.
I second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
So, any opposed? So moved. Okay, and then the next is also more of like an authorization. This is the Homeland Security. So resolve that the Town of Roxbury may enter into and deliver State of Connecticut Department of Energy Services and Public Protection Division of Energy Management and Homeland Security. So this is basically going to put us back in charge because there has been a change in, 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 in process. I need to remove Barbara and this puts me as that contact. So I have to make a.
Another no-brainer.
I know, it's, it's a complacency issue and this has to do with Homeland Security. So it's basically just some legalese that says that we want, we will cooperate.
I make a motion for you to replace Barbara on this issue on Homeland Security. Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. So the next thing that I had on there, we are continuing to work with Santa on the solar. As it stands right now, the town would, between the lease rate of money that we would actually get back, plus solar energy discounts of $20,000 per year, we would stand to gain about $50,000 a year based on a solar field. There was a lot of earlier discussion about this and when Santa had put this proposal together, there was a couple of things that I had noticed. I know at previous board of selectmen meeting, the previous minutes, it was said that the town, that school was not interested. They had looked at the senior center due to the gable end coming out on South Street. I figured the visibility would be an issue. So I'd like to keep it where it's, you know, not necessarily an eyesore and at any side of the senior center, it wouldn't, it would show. The same with, as well as town hall. I had that removed because again, it's gonna be visible from the street. But what they are talking about is Public Works Garage. And this would be on the west side of the sand and salt shed, the west side of the maintenance garage and then of the main building, the south side. So none of them would be visible from the street. But the bigger part of this is a solar field on Lower County Road. This is in between the last house on Lower Cook County Road heading south to the transfer station. I would like to move this to more of a town hearing to discuss feedback from the town on what their feelings are because I know we've had some mixed feelings. And I know, Russ, you've had a, you've been working with this project longer. Do you have any input on this?
Well, a couple of things. I think we should get the Historic Commission involved now. They may have something to say about things in, in the center of town. Second, I heard it wasn't feasible because it was a long run to Route 317 for a three-phase power line. So that, at first that, that's what they said, but if this company's saying that's not a problem.
They're saying it's not a problem. Now, they are gonna have to put new lines to head up there. They're gonna upgrade the system. What I've also asked to be included is a separate battery system for the communication station on 317. I wanna kind of get that, all that together because that's been an issue. So if they can provide backup power to this, I think that'd be outstanding. So there would be a benefit for the town on a lot of levels, not just the financial gain and, you know, clean energy from solar. But I know that I, I, I'd like to have the town's feedback to move ahead, to make sure that we're moving in the right direction.
Absolutely. The third thing is I'm concerned about the land trust because the land trust wants to put a trail through there and I think they should be included.
Got it.
Yes, that's right. This is Kim. This is the, the Hurlbut property.
Right.
Yeah.
This is the property adjacent to it, correct?
Yes, right.
And I, and I did ask about, you know, what, who's responsible for the land clearing. I actually walked the area last week, you know, once we found out what it was. You know, it's gonna be visible. If you look at the right side, if you, if you're heading like, you know, south on Lower County headed towards a transfer station, the, the land really does kind of fall down there and, and, and go, go low. So you would be able to see this. This would be just east of the Bronson properties, but it would be visible, correct?
Right. And last, if you're gonna put it on the landfill itself, you need a permit from, from deep, from the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Okay.
That's, that's not a big problem, but you're gonna have to submit to them a design to assure deep that the landfill isn't compromised.
Right, that's stable.
Absolutely.
There's no, no cap on the landfill, like the super fund, the House of Space Landfills I work at. There's no pool liner over. It's, it's 18 inches of clean dirt over all the garbage, which is probably all soil by now. But you, you need to let them know you're gonna do that.
Correct. I did ask about long-term maintenance of the site. You know, they're responsible for setting it up, all the land clearing, everything's on their dime, which is, you know, a, kind of a great deal, but we would have long-term maintenance. You know, so at least, you know, once a year, once every other year, we'd have to go in there and make sure that no, you know, woody plants are starting to build, you know.
Yeah, we, we'd have to mow it. We'd have to mow it. That's right. Yep, that, that, they're putting that on us?
Well, yeah, long-term maintenance, correct.
Okay.
Because I wanted to know the long-term responsibility for the town.
Yep, just know that that's the negotiation tool.
Absolutely.
Yeah, other towns make them do.
Just like the, just like the extra battery backup for the, for the communication station.
Right. I mean, you don't wanna.
I'd like to include that too.
Too far and we, this is a good thing, but, but know that that option's out there. And I think mowing is not a big deal.
Yep.
It's gonna cost about two, two grand a year to do that.
Okay. What's the, what's the size of the area, in terms of acreage that they're looking to put in?
Do you know, Patrick?
Um, I'm just trying to find it.
Yep.
Oh. What they had originally done with the town hall complex was 49,000 square feet with the land area up there is 344,000 square feet.
Oh. Okay, okay.
Anybody got a calculator?
I'm doing it.
Ask Google. How many acres?
Is it 42,344,000?
Yes, 344,000.
Divided by 42,000. Eight acres?
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a huge.
About eight acres? Okay.
Yeah.
And there's enough area to install 3.2 megawatts of solar gardens. The long-term effect is, is what it will do in, in, for the town over the life of it is $1.25 million that the town could generate from this. So there are things, the reason why the sense of urgency is the state programs end in January of 2023. So we'd have one year to make this happen.
Right. We gotta make it happen.
My, my ask of the Board of Selectmen is, should we do this as a public hearing? Should we send out a, like a survey monkey, like we've been doing with some of our other, just to, to, you know, basically get some interest first?
Public hearing.
I agree.
Public hearing. Okay, perfect.
The public hearing, because I think the survey won't give people enough information and I think they're gonna wanna see maps and this, you know.
Absolutely.
Size of, and all of that. I think that's gonna be more informative. Yep.
I think one of the one things that we've learned as well is, you know, being visible, you know, with the character of this community. I just wanted to take out anything that might be controversial and let's capitalize on what we can do. Okay, so I guess I will make a motion to continue this discussion with Santa.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so move, move ahead. Okay, so the next one is again, something that is regulatory. This is the trustee assignment with respect to Town of Roxbury Emergency Services Volunteers, Length of Service and Service Awards Plan, Members of Roxbury Volunteer Fire Department and Roxbury Ambulance Association. The award plan provides that the board of selectmen and plan, as plan administrator or trustee, you may delegate all or part of its duties to investment representatives hired by the plan administrator. So we already have a resignation from Jim Conway on file. I know this again is, you know, a motion to make this board. So I guess I will make the motion to sign over administrator and trustee delegation for Patrick Roy, Kim Tester and Russell Drenzo.
God, I have a question.
Go ahead.
It was always the two selectmen because you're part of the pension and that's got a conflict of interest, if I'm not mistaken.
So I act as. Trustee of the trust fund under the plan. The delegation is slightly different, but yes, this is the same, you've been part of this before, Russ. This is just adding Kim and myself to this.
Okay, I make a motion to add you and Kim to this.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, excellent. So we will continue. It was brought to my attention and honestly, I think this probably could have been under communications from the public and I think I will push that a little bit more. I've had some interest in discussion with some of our residents about leaf blowers as a pollutant concern, as well as a noise concern. There were, are a lot of studies and a lot of information that has been moved, that it's been brought forward, including hydrocarbon emissions. One associated a half an hour of yard work with a two-stroke leaf blower are about the same as a 3,900 mile drive from Texas to Austin in a Ford Raptor.
What?
So how loud some of these gas-powered units can produce more than 100 decibels of low frequency while penetrating sound or as much noise as a plane taking off. And, and I will say, it, it does get a little obnoxious when you have four or five, you know, doing these big lots. So, you know, it's been brought up. Again, this might be, you know, something that I can move to have residents talk on. This could be a public hearing or this could be a survey item. So I guess I'm looking for a little bit of feedback.
First of all, we have no jurisdiction. Pollution is a jurisdiction of deep. So if we get into this, we're only gonna have to go to court and we're gonna lose. Second, people gotta blow their leaves. What do you want? I, I, now, we're, we're all moving to batteries. I, I have. And I know people don't like the noise, but we live in the woods. There's a lot of leaves and it's, to me, I hear it and it's not that un. And it's to me, I hear it, and it's not that annoying. Um so I I think this is another one of, I I don't know, let's be neighbors. Come on, we gotta blow our leaves. And don't use climate change and pollution as your excuse because deep has air pollution requirements, and and we we don't have jurisdiction over that. Um I I don't know. I I think we're wasting time, but I'll always support this board and what they wanna go forward with, but I I think we got better things to worry about.
Um I think that a topic like this, as an educator, would be something that could be in a list of things that we might want to to just um kind of hand out as sort of a an information component, so that people.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, maybe people haven't thought about it before, and you know, some of I I, you know, we can research those facts to make sure they're accurate, but um I think that could be something that would be, you know, handled in that way, just to kinda get the information out, but you know.
Then should uh with the help of the Conservation Commission, perhaps?
That would be great.
Right, but to make a regulation, we have no way to enforce it.
Well, they do. I they they have had, like even in as close as New Jersey, they passed legislation um ordinance against it. So and I know in California, it's been a hot topic, so there's been a lot more news in it, so that's why.
Let's not become California or Jersey, please, please. Um but what are people supposed to do?
Okay. Okay, then I will look. There's nothing to.
Leaves off their lawn and. But education, I'm all for that.
Yeah, I think it's a good place to start, and we can we can make a list of things, cause you know, in this new board, uh you know, a lot of people are coming out and expressing their opinions, and you know, we're learning a lot about how people feel about different things, and I think we'll end up with an interesting list um that we can then share and put information out so people are made aware.
Got it. Okay, so there's no action on that uh on that point. Um I will just continue to uh move ahead and uh push that to.
Good point, but what's the solution? People complain, but what's the solution from most people?
Yeah.
Ban it?
And uh I honest, there's there's an argument to be made about lithium uh pollu-, you know, the 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 problems with lithium batteries also.
Oh, my God. I mean, look at the articles in the New York Times about the Congo and what's going on in Africa because of batteries and stuff. We're 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 moving too fast. We need to slow down and really think about, I think where we're moving, this country is in a good place, but we're moving too fast, and people need to blow their leaves. They need to mow their lawn. They need to blow their snow off their driveway. I'm sorry, it's not a perfect world.
Got it. I appreciate the feedback, Russ. Thank you very, very much. Thank you, Kim, as well.
Sure.
Got it. Um, okay, so no action on leaf blower town concern. Uh next is um the property lines uh at Minor Memorial Library, and this is uh a little bit more of an update. What this is um is the um Arthur Miller Studio uh that still remains by the uh public garage. Uh there was a request made by the library um to merge the library property uh in the land property that's next to it. Um that would clear up any setbacks between the two lots and allow uh a placement for this. Um they've already started um working on uh getting funds together to restore it, and they wanna have it uh a trust built with an endowment to take care of it long-term. Um I did some research, uh pulled the property cards, and uh it's not the same ownership. Uh the town owns the lot, uh the land, if you will, and Minor Memorial owns the land and the building. Um so it can't be done. Um so my answer back to uh the library was to, if you want to turn the the property over to uh the town, then it can be merged, um no different than uh the Hodge Library. Um it just becomes uh as a town property instead of its own holding. Um they are, you know, gonna consider it. I have no other update on that. Um but if so, then the, you know, I did say that if they did do that, then we could uh go to a planning meeting and and see if we could have that uh boundary taken away. That would give them the ability to use the spot that they want to for that studio.
Yeah, did we accept that? I don't remember accepting that.
The the studio?
Yeah.
It's here, it's been here for a couple of years. It's out of the public works.
Did we accept it? Cause I remember there was some.
Yeah, it's not, it's not ours, it's it's theirs. But I I'm trying to come up.
Just just so we're clear that.
Go.
The town, the town has not officially accepted that.
No, it's not our responsibility, and we will not spend any money in this. That's been made very, very clear, um and that's still to stand. It it, nothing will change. Um it's literally just the property line to where they'd like to put this.
Okay, cause initially, and obviously, you know, Kim weren't part of this, they wanted the town to take it. And and we we declined.
Correct.
And that's where I remember it ending, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Kind of, this is new to me.
Exactly, and it's not. They're they're just looking to uh find a spot for it at the library. Um nor will we. This won't be on our insurance. They have to self-insure. Um this is is very similar to the Calder statue out front. Um it's viewed more as a piece of art, uh so they're.
Couldn't there be a Sony variance, Kim, or it it doesn't matter?
Um, no, this is planning. I think this is this the the property line is a big deal, and um because that the it wouldn't meet the setbacks, it would have to be, uh I don't know, maybe CBA, but I don't think there's any hardship, so.
Okay, I'm I'm with you, Pat, on that.
Yep, well, it would actually be over that boundary. Yeah, the the whole problem that we stand, that we stand basically based on their um their proposals, they don't have the room for it. So how can we merge those two properties? Well, uh the town isn't gonna sign over the land, so Minor would have to sign over the library. Um and I did, you know, and 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 I I would be okay with having uh our own uh town legal counsel uh draw what up, you know, whatever documents would be necessary to, you know, represent us in that, to make sure that everything is done correctly.
Absolutely.
They really have to look at, um you know, because it was a a grant, and then, you know, that that would, it started minor. Um they have to look at the legalities to make sure that they're actually following the will of um, you know, how it was needed over to them. So there's a little, a couple more questions asked, but I did tell them to continue to move forward, so that's more like an update.
Great, thank you.
Um, so ARPA funds, um I'm waiting to hear back. Uh we did have a little bit of the delay over the Thanksgiving holiday. We were trying to find out um if they had any public notice uh templates that could be put out. Uh the answer ended up becoming no. Um so we have an ad going out this week, um where we're gonna reach out to any other nonprofits in a public. Um it it's gonna go as a public announcement in the paper um to see if there's anybody that uh would like to apply in addition to the people that we've already uh somewhat earmarked or looked at. Um so that ad is going out next week. Until we exhaust every effort of anyone that might still be interested uh in this program, we're kind of at a standstill. Um so we're looking at hopefully wrapping this public notice uh by the end of year's end. Um they did require that we have a uh specific committee for that of three people. Um at this point, it's gonna be uh Andy Engel, uh myself, uh and Mary Shanky uh has agreed to be on that board, and basically, it's an oversight of, you know, making sure that everything's followed correctly, and then we move forward. Once we have any other interest exhausted, uh they can vote on it from the Board of Finance, and then we will have to go to a public hearing. Um and the three of us will be part of that as well. Um so we're continuing to move forward. We wanna wrap this up uh by early spring. Uh but at this point, we're just waiting for the public announcement to go out.
Yeah, that's great. And I think that the threesome is a a very good grouping.
I was very excited to have her on board.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh any other questions on that, Russ, or anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, we're moving forward. Um, bridge update. I uh I was out there yesterday morning putting hay.
Why you?
Why not me?
Cause he enjoys it.
Cause he got a town crew, but I love it. I love it, Pat, but why you?
Well.
I, look, I I know, but it was unstable, and you know, you can't leave dirt, and so I'm sorry for um saying that, you know, we need to get hay on this as soon as possible.
Before the rain.
But I didn't mean you.
Oh, that's okay.
But Russ, he enjoys it. He's enjoying.
We were picking up uh trees the other day with the town crew. I was moving what I can, what I couldn't. I told them to get out with the plow and.
There you go.
Honestly, um I I will say that the town crew, I mean, for the record, um those guys are amazing. I I don't question any of their competence uh when it comes to bridge building. Um you know, obviously, there's a little details that we have to uh finish up on every level, but uh overall, I could not have been any more proud of the town crew. Job well done.
That's awesome. Absolutely.
Very excited.
To be a pain in the ass wetland guy, just next time, we need to dig it a little deeper, that's all. That's all.
Absolutely.
Rip rap at the end of satisfy Andy's Andy's little little problems, so. But otherwise, I I can't agree, and right out of the gate, we saved you and we, cause we're a board, saved the town a ton of money doing it.
A lot of money.
And with Squire Road, just just let's get an application into the Wetland Commission ahead of time, so there could there could be, you know, that that kind of um everybody's joining in and how it it needs to be done. It'd be great.
Russ, we.
Keep us in line.
We totally appreciate your guidance on all of that, and I know.
Absolutely.
It's very, very important. Thank you.
Yeah. No, it was done really well, but we're perfectionists, and we we're big about crossings.
We.
That's why all this works.
It was really Andy called me up, started complaining, but but I, we satisfied him, and I and I thought it was really well done. And I I my hat's off to you and the town crew. And the town crew is a great bunch of guys. Don't.
Yep.
Ever put those guys, um, don't listen to what you might have heard in the past, cause they're a good bunch of guys. If they have a good leader, um you're gonna go a long way with them.
Yeah.
Very proud of them, very proud of them. Actually, uh today, since we had a little bit of a break with, and it was a nice day out, uh they were working out all all the equipment, getting it ready for snow. Um the other day, when we had that snowstorm, we realized that uh we weren't quite ready, so uh as soon as the bridge was over, that was my first priority, to start getting onto the machine, making sure everything is greased up, everything works properly. Uh I'm still waiting to hear back from uh Salt and Sand. Um uh they're, they haven't gotten back to us yet to get uh extra deliveries. I wanna make sure we're uh built up and and we have all the surplus we need uh heading into winter, so I'd like to see that full.
Yeah.
Great.
And my only advice, Pat, from my years of experience, is when we have light rain and close to freezing temperatures, watch the dirt roads.
Yes.
The difference between dirt and uh the paved roads is amazing.
I actually will, I I learned that.
Off guard many times on that.
Yep.
And I think that's what happened on this last storm, or yes, like I said, yes.
It did, and and I'll just be honest, Russ, we, you know, it was it was snowing, we didn't know when it was gonna end. Uh it was Sunday morning a week ago. Um it was just kept snowing, and it was, you know, getting close to to an inch, and I was just worried, cause it was getting very slippery, so. You know, again, we didn't have anything, so I called up Butch. We got down there, we hooked up the uh machines that we needed to hit all the paved roads within an hour and a half. Um but the dirt roads, we didn't think were necessary, and then uh sure enough, later in the day, I was uh rescuing someone on uh Grassy Hill Road that couldn't get up. Um and so the next morning, we went out, it was still, the snow was still there. We made sure that everything was uh sanded uh on the dirt roads. I'm learning a little bit more about that, too.
The dirts are much worse than the paves, definitely.
I agree.
Much harder.
Yep.
You have an appreciation with a plow truck and snow, how steep some of these inclines are. Um it's definitely a harrowing experience, and again.
Come up Garnet Road.
Oh, my God, Garnet is tough. That's a, that's one of the tougher.
Pat, take a ride with Floyd up Garnet Road. You'll be, you'll have to change your underwear. It's crazy, so.
Uh so again, hats off to the uh Public Works Department. Uh they do an amazing job.
Yeah.
Okay, my apologies for the coffee. Um, okay, so then the next is uh on cannabis legislation. Um we're still kind of in that window um where we haven't uh really made too much of a decision on it. Um obviously, this is something that's gonna go before uh before the state, and then it will work as that lottery system uh works out, but um before making any decisions as a board, um I would like this to go to a public hearing um to make sure that we hear the voice uh of our townspeople. Um and basically, uh the three things that I feel that are are most important, at least from my side, um is sale, uh commercial production, um and use on town property.
I I thought we we as a board, we, I I thought the previous board voted to um not have it on town property. Did we not go to a public hearing or?
No, I don't, I don't believe so, cause we, Patrick and I actually met with Gail, you know, in the transition, and talked about the ordinance, and um there wasn't anything listed.
Oh, okay. I thought we, maybe we voted to move it forward.
I think that's what happened, correct?
But there wasn't anything official uh to do that.
Uh for the record, I am opposed to it being sold in town or being used on town property. Um I'm, I thought the state should decriminalize it, not make it legal, but okay, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. So that's kinda where I wanna move, but uh again, I wanna make sure that we, you know, if somebody has a difference of opinion here in the town, I wanna give them uh the ability to speak up. Um so I'd like to kinda move that ahead, probably to sometime in January. Um you know, we are kind of at a deadline before the applications end um for that legislation, which will be uh at the end of June uh two thousand twenty-two. Um so I'd like to make a motion to have this go to public hearing.
So moved, and all the people from the sixties will be there. Don't be surprised if you smell things in the air.
I second.
Remember, we're not outlawing its use. You could do whatever you want on your own property. This is literally the commercial sale, the commercial production, and use on town property are the three big, big issues. Okay, so uh so so uh.
So we don't have to pick a date tonight. We can, we can pick a date.
Correct, there is, um, cause I I I I, and this is to uh my learning process. Um I'm not exactly sure what the window based. I mean, I know there's different uh parameters as to how the window has to be. Um I reached out to have this uh public notice done. Uh I just gotta make sure that I follow the right thing, so I'm looking for uh sometime in January, so we will actually have a Board of Selectment meeting uh before then.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you you have a motion, you have a second, we need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Continue to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so uh two thousand twenty-two Board of Selectment meeting dates, uh we're sent that as an attachment. Uh the only difference is we're gonna go from Mondays to Tuesdays. Um it and and that's uh for kinda selfish reasons as well, because the town hall is closed on Mondays, and it's hard to get information together, and I'd like to be prepared as possible, so it gives us a little bit more window.
Well, you got Monday Night Football, and the reason why we had changed it to Tuesday is uh Barbara, Barbara wanted to be going to Board of Ed meetings when things were happening, and they're on Monday night.
That's also the other thing, correct?
Right, and I know, I know that Kim, Kim's an educator, and she's gonna be interested in that.
I would like to do that.
Yeah, she could go and keep BRIs and ears, but we changed it to Tuesday, and nobody ever went to the BOE meetings. I I'm the uh Wetland Enforcement Officer at Bridgewater. Our meetings are the first Tuesday of the month, but I don't have to go to them unless there's an enforcement action that requires me, which is very rare. But now and then, I might have to say to you guys, I can't make the meeting, cause I have to go to a Bridgewater meeting.
If we may have to.
Reason why we changed it.
If we have to move it a day, we can do that, too. These are all, you know, tentative, but I I wanna make sure that, you know, there's there's a strength in this board, and your opinion matters.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um I would wanna do everything. I would wanna, well, i- if not, then we're gonna, yeah. I I need your opinion, so we we will continue to work with you. Um it also helps it a little bit easier on Julie, who's all over the board right now. I'm trying to make um our Julie Katie uh her life a little easier, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You have some other moves, but I'll talk to you about that on on a different side, Russ. Um, okay, so I have this agenda, I'd like to make a a motion to approve dates for two thousand twenty-two. Uh seven o'clock first Tuesday of the month, all the dates of the year. Make some all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? It moves, okay, I've also included the holiday schedule, we have two different holiday schedules, one for the Town Hall Senior Center. As well as one for the Public Works, um there's actually one difference of Lincoln's birthday to Martin Luther King's birthday, they're just uh different days. Um but everything else is uh the same, so I make a motion to approve the holiday schedule.
Well, wait, wait a minute, nah. Has it changed?
No.
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 So they get the fourteen days, I think it is.
I think it's twelve, I counted twelve.
Twelve.
It's twelve.
On both of them. Okay, well, okay, cuz Barbara will tell you I bitch every year, so I'm gonna bitch this year. Twelve holidays, really? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got it, um. Okay, so uh Fire Marshal report. Uh Fire Marshal is uh working with Second Act Farm to come up with a resolution to correct their sprinkler issues. Um also working, the Fire Chief and Janet, uh our Fire Marshal is uh working to get property on fire pond. Property fire pond inspected, um. And then uh there was a request to have a citizen that would like to do a fireworks display at the annual tree lighting. Um due per two permitting, um it was the claw, uh decided not to do it this year.
That's a great idea, but I don't know, kind of a close.
It was a little tight, it's a little tight there, yeah.
Yeah.
It was the, it was the week before, they they ended up, uh I and I gotta say. Nor does anyone else.
No.
Um. But uh as as far as that's uh the the tree lighting went, you know, a special thanks to the Rec Department, I, it was more people there than I've ever seen. More kids there than I've ever seen, Bill Cario came with the carriage, and we had Santa and a huge bonfire, and you know, hands off to Public Works. Uh the Rec Commission, Bill Cario specifically, um it was just great, and the Booth Free Schoolchildren, the fourth and fifth grader chorus. Uh was simply beautiful, um so thanks to everybody that was there, I had a blast, I enjoyed it. Um and if you guys hadn't heard, there's pictures of uh SpaceX, like there was a stream of sixty satellites. Uh just after I gave my speech, going across the sky. Um and several citizens took pictures of it, posted it on Facebook, and they said it looked like Santa and his reindeer.
Oh, no kidding.
Kind of a beautiful.
Where where are those pictures posted, do you know?
Uh on Facebook, on Facebook, Jack Huber got a great shot of it, oh. His house, uh that's posted, uh the whole night was great, and I have so many people to thank. That was really one of those moments where the community comes together, and it couldn't be any more proud, so job well done by all. All a good night, um and then we had the uh Resident Trooper Report, um. Uh five criminal, non-criminal investigations conducted over last month, this is November, reporting from November first. To November thirtieth, um two hundred and fourteen total calls uh within Roxbury, set six accident investigations, eight infractions. And then a hundred and eighty-five other miscellaneous requests, their notable incidents. Um is just to remind everyone to continue to lock their cars, uh do not leave the keys in it. Um and then um. The only other thing, uh we're gonna start meeting a little bit more formally, I've been meeting with Matt. Um but we're gonna have more formal weekly meetings um that we can get into things. Uh the accounts and the grant status on the cameras, um we've had to hold off for that on the bidding. And vetting process uh from the state is that we're waiting uh for, so there's no update on cameras at this point, but they're still working on it.
This is body cameras you're talking about?
Correct, there is a grant to pay for this, this isn't gonna be from us, but uh I wanna keep up to date on what they're doing with it, and I will keep you posted when I have more information. Um. We had, uh we have two uh police vehicles, fifteen, uh two thousand fifteen Explorer and the two thousand and seventeen Explorer. Two thousand fifteen Explorer uh this week is in the shop, getting approximately three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents in repairs. Um and we may have to look to a long-term, um you know, replacement. You know, process, uh and I wanna look at uh just the routine maintenance of it to see what that schedule looks like. You know, I know the town crew does, you know, oil changes and things, but we might have to do a little bit more. Um you know, like a yearly up, you know, maintenance check on all of them, and just bring them in for a little bit more of a thorough. Uh inspection uh to keep everything safe, so that's just the uh Resident Trooper Report, we have nothing else to uh. Uh approve or report on that, and. Unless there are any other questions, that's all I have.
Well, great job, Pat.
It was well done. Was very thorough.
We are at uh seven fifty-four, so we meet our ninety minute, and I will promise to talk slower as it goes.
But I I I propose to make that sixty minutes. I don't know, it came up with ninety, but.
Yeah, it was no ninety, yeah.
Next meeting, I'd like to talk about dirt roads and drainage.
Okay.
If we can put that on the agenda.
Yeah.
So noted.
Cuz we need to do something about Grassy Hill Road and uh Schoolhouse Road.
Yeah.
Yes, um I uh part of uh when all the trees came down, I did a a a perimeter of of the town. Uh drive around, and I was shocked at how bad Schoolhouse uh has washed out, um it's, there's, we need a better option there, cuz half.
Well, it's been going on for years, and we and we we keep spending money putting Band-Aids on, it's time to fix it. And Grassy Hill Road is a serious problem, that really, I I think we've overlooked it for far too long.
Yeah.
I I agree, you have my support there, of course. Okay, so any other business?
I always felt that. We should be looking at these things now and put it in the budget. As a separate line item for each road, where before it was a just a grand. You know, okay, we're gonna throw drainage here and throw drainage there with no budget, no plan. Uh just go do it, and I didn't like that that style, I like a style of planning, like. Wh- we should think now, what dirt roads really need drainage upgrades? Get bids or proposals, at least somebody that gives us an idea of the cost and put it into the budget. As a separate line item.
I I agree with that, I am a planner as well, and that's, I feel much better with having all of that background information. So that we can move ahead and know what we're getting into.
Right.
Completely agree, we should have a plan, got it.
Yeah.
Um I'll try and co- collect as much information as I can between now and the next meeting, um so I have a little bit more education on that as well, let me see if I can even get some. Uh prices on what that should be.
Okay, great.
It's great.
We'll start with the the ones that are the worst, and definitely Grassy Hill and uh Schoolhouse are definitely it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other uh, any other business?
I make a motion to adjourn?
I I second that. Patrick, it was very good.
Thank you, Kim, thank you, Russ. Um, our next meeting is gonna be on uh Tuesday, January fourth, then. Um and my only other note is uh Kim and Russ, I will need to see you at some point um in the next. Time, uh I need some things signed, we need to uh formalize the trustee information, so basically, everything that we agreed on. Um we have a whole bunch of signing to do.
They're out of the bank.
Okay.
Signed, signatory stuff, uh up here on Wednesday, and I thought you were having a New Year's Eve party.
Am I having a New Year's Eve party?
I think you are. I nominate you.
Don't second that, Kim, don't second.
He's already adjourned, you're safe.
Just let me know so I can get stuff for it before you show up.
Either that or you can leave your house.
Exactly, all right, anything else to cover?
No.
No, that's good.
That was great, thank you, guys, have a great night.
Good night. Bye-bye.